Any citizen wishing to render comment, please step forward to the podium on our left, state your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
This podium.
That is it?
All right. My name is Mark Kammer from Peaches Energy. So, there's no timer. I'll keep it short. I just wanted to take this opportunity to reiterate a couple of the points that were outlined in a letter that we had submitted for your last meeting, and so I'm sure you've seen a draft of that letter by this time, and it's in the memo that's been distributed. And just some of the key points from that letter, you know, of course, you know, we applaud the city of Kenmore for, you know, taking this on and proactively revising your wireless siting guidelines or code. Co-location on PSC facilities, you know, it is a great way to continue providing reliable cellular coverage to your citizens throughout the city, but, you know, at the same time limiting the disruption of having to erect new infrastructure by using existing infrastructure. It makes a lot of sense just to keep new equipment where there is existing equipment. We currently host six sites in the city of Kenmore, so that is four on transmission poles and two on distribution poles. And we are, you know, excited to and continue to partner with cities and wireless carriers to provide co-location sites, but the installation of wireless equipment is absolutely secondary to the safety of our workforce, which is why we have established clearance requirements for above-the-conductor pole additions. And again, that's to ensure the safety of our line crews out in the field and any contractors that we work with. Those clearance requirements are seven feet above the conductor for distribution poles and a 10-foot clearance on transmission poles. This is all in the letter. Any proposed pole attachment that does not allow for the minimum clearance requirements is not in alignment with our established safety guidelines. A standard wireless installation, and they vary so greatly that it's hard to say what a standard one is, but we peg that at about 16 to 20 feet of pole space between the antenna and the clearance requirement, and then any required electronics that would support the antenna array. And in certain circumstances, PSC is able to grant variance on the seven or 10-foot clearance requirements, but, I mean, that is by no means the normal operating procedure. We do everything that we can to adhere to the standards that we've established because, you know, like I said, it's for the safety of our employees. So, there isn't really any guarantee that either a specific type of site or a certain percentage of sites would qualify for such a variance, even though we do grant them sometimes. So, any assumptions about our, PSC's ability to grant variances doesn't, you can't make assumptions about it. You can't assume that it will happen in a certain, you know, percentage of cases, because they are evaluated on a case-by-case basis depending on the surrounding features of the land and the community, what the right-of-ways look like. So, in order to allow for the reliable placement of wireless sites on PSC poles, we would encourage the commission to enact a code which does allow for the full extent of PSC's clearance requirements, in addition to the space that's required, obviously, for the antenna and the supporting equipment. We don't like to compromise those safety guidelines wherever possible. And, you know, we're, of course, more than happy to work with the commission to establish code language which does honor the full extent of our safety standards while providing carriers the necessary conditions to just maintain reliable coverage throughout the city of Kenmore. So, just wanted to make those, reiterate those points, which, again, are all in the letter, and be happy to stay in touch with you guys and answer any questions that you may have related to our participation in this process. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah.
Next on the list is Ken Lyons.
Thank you. I have very little to say tonight. I just wanted to say thank you for all of the time you put into this process. We, all of the concerns that we have about the code, we've already stood into the record in some cases many, many, many times. I think the only final thought I'd probably leave with you is that, obviously, we're just very concerned about some of the judgments that staff and others have made about the viability of us being, the size of antennas that we use, or the number of antennas that's viable for us. We just don't believe that that's accurate, and we would just ask that the planning commission consider that when they consider these regulations. Our RF engineering teams are very hardworking, and they've told us what the minimum is. That information has been provided into the record, but to the extent that the regulations, at least at this point, don't seem to reflect that. So, we appreciate your consideration of that. I will continue to be in the back in case you have any questions later on. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Next on the list is Chuck Muddell, and I apologize, Chuck, if I mispronounced your last name.
Thank you. Chuck Muddell, on behalf of Verizon Wireless, I have no additional comments to make. I testified at the public hearing. And one issue that I did address was, we think, the need to have small cells be permitted in all zones in order to further the city's policy in facilitating these kinds of facilities. And so, I provided some, if the planning commission agrees, then I have supplied some language that would accomplish that in the proposed ordinance. Also, if the planning commission has any questions about small cells, Peter Mauro of Verizon Wireless is here. I know there was some questions last week, and we'd be happy to address those if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Those are all the names on the citizen comment sign-in sheet. If there's anybody else who'd like to render comment, feel free to step forward and do so. Going once, no takers. That closes, yes, please. State your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Rebecca Sturts, homeowner at 6504 Northeast 188th Street in Kenmore. I just became aware of this ongoing discussion. I know there's been lots of discussions happening so far. And from what I've been able to see going back over previous minutes, I see there's a lot of addressing how the towers are going to look, and hopefully that they're not going to be obtrusive. I'm just wondering, has there been any attention paid to the safety and the health effects of installing more towers, because that's a particular concern of mine?
Well, it's not a Q and A, but go ahead and complete your comments, and we'll have comment after everybody's done talking.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, that, it was more a question, since I'm kind of late to the game, and I just, you know, I don't want to be repeating stuff that has been discussed already.
Absolutely.
And I didn't see anything from what I was, you know, looking back over previous agendas online.
Okay.
So, I don't know if anyone's going to be addressing that, or should I be coming up again later?
It's up to my colleagues, but I'll let you finish, and then we'll have the staff come up and respond to, and present some background and respond to questions that we have, which may include yours.
Great. Thanks.
Thanks, Rebecca. All right. I'll give it one more sweep. If anybody else would like to render comment, please feel free to step forward and do so. Going once. That closes the citizen comment portion of the agenda tonight. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes, June 7, 2016. Do I hear a motion to approve? Approve to approve? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I hear any discussion or proposal for amendment? There being none, all in favor of the motion to approve the minutes, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions? There being none, the motion carries, the minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda, wireless communication facilities, discussion and final recommendation. I invite the city staff to the presentation table. Before we start, can, I think Commissioner Mulcaire is on the line, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Should we check to see if he can hear us or respond?
Mike, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. All right. Do you guys want to give some preliminary comments to start and before we ask questions?
I guess, you know, we all know the reason that we're here tonight is following your public hearing. This is to kind of have further deliberation on the comments that you received, and in your packet, there is a matrix put together on the comments that were received, the issues that were raised, and at least a staff response. So, you have that. The only thing that isn't addressed in that would be the comments you've heard this evening and the letter that Mr. Majol said was in front of you as well. So, that is not part of that matrix. So, this evening, I'm going to turn it over to Laurie. She can kind of go through that matrix if you have any comments on that, any response to the comments you receive this evening, and then we'll be looking for direction from the commission.
Thank you, Debbie. Laurie?
Good evening. So, you have the matrix in front of you, and rather than go through it, unless you want me to do that, I was going to point out that staff was making recommendations in three areas for modifications. The first was to require a different kind of a landscape buffer in commercial zones when the facility was going to be adjacent to residential development. That was a comment that was raised by Jim Howard, and so staff was recommending that change. Staff was also recommending a change to the stealth technology information to add the term "art." We talked about this last time, to encompass things like the towers that Mr. Howard had attached copies of photos to his email. And so, we were suggesting that change to make clear that a stealth installation could also be an art installation. And the third change we were recommending, it was a change recommended by T-Mobile, and that had to do with clarification between when an ECFM modification is used versus when the other modification standards are used. And at the appropriate time, I have draft revised language for you to look at. There were, I think, four different sections of the regulations that we were suggesting amendments in to clarify that, so that only those proposals that were not considered ECFM's would go through those other modification processes.
So, you should pass those out, I think, and then we can turn to questions among the commissioners.
And I did send this electronically to Mike.
Great. All right. If people want to take time to read this, that's fine. If people have questions, I'm happy to let those start. So, I'm going to start some questions unless I want a recess or something for further reading, but I have a pretty good sense of where we are. I think you've endorsed the height limits in response to the public comments at the last meeting.
Correct.
That seems to be the biggest point of concern among the carriers. And Laurie and I traded a few emails, because I was trying to remember the evolution of where we got to the position we are now. I know that AT&amp;T in particular, T-Mobile to a lesser extent, have come in repeatedly with requests to increase the height limits. We've considered those requests. I know we've done it at least twice already. Laurie, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we started out at 10 feet above utility poles with a cap of 45 feet? Usual utility pole height is 35 feet. AT&amp;T and others have made some pretty good points. Now, you need at least 15 more feet because of the seven-foot separation between the antenna and the utility pole. That's PSC's guidelines. We typically have an eight-foot antenna. So, we had increased the height, I think, from 45 to 50 in the residential zones and 55 in the commercial zones.
Right.
Non-view.
Non-view.
Okay. So, we thought we were accommodating that, and then there were concerns about, well, we need more height in certain cases, and not our utility poles are that same height, somewhere higher. And then we had the minor modification compromise that we introduced, I think, in May or late April. So, that allowed for a streamlined process for getting an additional five feet without lots of elaborate hearings and time consumed. So, it sounds to me like we've made at least three compromises to try and increase height limits and accommodate the industry on these height limits. And now, the last set of comments and documents from AT&amp;T say, well, we actually like to have two eight-foot antenna on our utility poles. So, we need not just 50 or 55 feet, we need about 60 or 65 feet. So, it seems like that comment can lighten the game, and maybe somebody can refresh my memory. I thought we were starting with this 15-foot additional height request, and now we're getting into the 25-foot range. And I think there's supposed to be a buffer between the two eight-feet antennas, so we might be in the 30-foot range. Am I missing something on this, or can somebody help refresh my memory on when this desire for an additional 15 or so feet came up?
Well, I know that in early March, AT&amp;T's recommendation was 30 feet above a utility pole capped at 65 feet.
Yeah.
Their initial recommendation was the current standard, which actually is 60 feet in residential zones.
Is that because I misunderstood something back in March, and they wanted room for two eight-foot antennas separated between themselves and the utility facilities?
I think consistently they have said that they were requesting two antenna arrays.
Okay. And then there was DAR and smaller cell facilities, and DAS, sorry. And one of our goals with having these height limits with the allowance for appeals and adjustments and CUPs was to encourage the industry to try and increase efficiencies with the kind of antenna they use, to be less intrusive, to get more value and more capacity out of the antennas they do have, or to replace the ones they do have. But I think there was discussion of that early on, and then AT&amp;T, I think, indicated they're less interested in using DAS. Is that right, Laurie?
Right. In this area.
Was that during our process?
Yes.
When did that decision come up? Do you know?
I don't know that I could put an exact date on it, but...
Right. Was it after we made some compromises?
Doug, I don't know.
Not sure? Okay. All right. The comment made about, I think it was from Chuck, that they want to encourage small-cell facilities around town and that our proposed regulations discourage that. I want to understand that better. Does that make sense to you? Are we discouraging that?
I think that the current standards as written would allow small cells, certainly on facades or on rooftops. Again, a conditional use permit would be required, an administrative conditional use permit in the residential zones. So, I guess that would be a form of discouragement. You could consider that if you felt that they should be outright permitted in the residential zones. We did make a provision specifically to allow a single permit to address a number of small-cell facilities or DAS facilities in an area. So, if it were a residential area, for example, one administrative conditional use permit might be required to cite multiple facilities.
So, you're saying they need a CUP in a residential zone for a small-cell facility, even if it's within the height limit?
Correct. Correct. Because any facility on a rooftop or on a facade in the residential zones requires a conditional use permit.
Okay. Are we out of step with other jurisdictions on that?
I can look at the chart and tell you. I can't answer that off the top of my head.
Right. I know I'm peppering you with the question.
You are.
Appreciate your patience, tolerance for that. If you can, that'd be great. If you think it'll take a bit, I'll yield...
I don't want to make any distinctions. I may only look at the other jurisdictions. I don't think they called out small cells.
They're no more discouraged than any other facility?
Yeah, right. Exactly. Which is what ours looked like before.
Okay.
So, yeah. So, I have the chart in front of me if you want, and Deborah is right in that it doesn't call out small cells. So, if you're talking about rooftops, it looks like 15 feet, 15 feet with a building permit only. There's one with an administrative review, 12 feet with a building permit, a couple of others, 15 feet with a building permit. So, in several cases, a rooftop antenna would not require a conditional use permit.
Neighboring jurisdictions?
Right.
So, we're imposing something more, greater burden for those small cells on a rooftop?
Again, there's no distinction between small cells and regular antenna.
Right. But do the other jurisdictions make that distinction?
No.
They just have building permit requirements instead of CUP?
Right. And there's, yeah, and there's one, looks like, requires a CUP, or an administrative CUP.
Okay. Anyone else?
Another one is 12 feet, but over 12 feet, it's a CUP.
Okay. I did want to respond, I was going to yield the floor, but I did want to respond to Rebecca's question. And Rebecca, I didn't quite get your last name. Can you spell it?
S T U R T Z.
S T U R T Z. Thanks, Rebecca. But you had concerns about the health and safety effects of these wireless facilities, and we did take that up pretty early in the process. Laurie, did you want to, I want to get it right, so you're probably a better spokesperson for that than we are.
Yeah. So, the questions of radiation, which I think is the question that she's concerned about, are not something that can be addressed by the city. That's addressed only by the FCC.
FCC. Okay. But we do require, I think at the outset, there had to be some degree of testing.
Right. Right. There is testing of the facility, and they have to meet the FCC standards, or if there's a modification to a facility, they have to test.
And is that a condition of our granting a permit?
Right.
Okay. All right. I yield the floor. Does anybody else have questions?
I think as a point of clarification, some of the things that we're trying to do, like putting in, you know, permitting processes that are slightly more, have slightly more review to them, rather than just outright permitting, allow for public comment. So, that's part of the reason that we're doing that, is so that public can have input into these processes, if that's helpful at all.
Okay. Anybody else? Something that came to mind, too, sorry to retake it, but as long as it's open, is the notion of the stealth requirement. It sounds like it's one of the things we ask for when somebody doesn't immediately qualify for a permit. Is that right? Or come within the height limit?
Well, anytime there's a facility that comes in, the concealment elements code section has sort of different standards for different uses and recommendations. So, on all facilities, there are some suggestions, in some cases raised as requirements.
Okay. I was thinking, maybe we could, is there suggestions or requirements?
We can look at the code section if you'd like. It is, sorry, 186120. So, you'll see the distinction. It's, do y'all have that? So, for all facilities, wherever possible, stealth installations are required. If it's not possible, designed to blend with existing surroundings to the extent feasible, power cables and other conduit shall be contained within the support structure. So, there are a number of standards. There, I guess you could say they're requirements, but there are opportunities when something is not feasible to look at other options. And then, as you go on, for rooftop antennas and facade antennas and towers and satellite dishes, there are standards specific to those types of facilities in that code section.
So, somebody, bear with me here, if somebody comes within the height limit, they still have to satisfy these?
Correct.
Standards?
Correct.
So...
Unless you got a major adjustment.
Unless you got a major adjustment. Okay.
Right. Or you can vary any code standard.
Right.
If you have to.
They'd have to justify it through the review process and public comment before they'd be relieved of having to satisfy these standards?
Right. And it seems unlikely that you would have to go to that extent, given the flexibility in this language.
Okay. Do we know why AT, and we could ask Ken, I suppose, but I was wondering if you've had discussions with AT&amp;T as to why they now, they are less interested in DAS or small-cell antenna?
I think you should ask Ken. My understanding is that it is not a technology that they think would work or that they are interested in pursuing in this area. But as to the technical specifics of why, I think you probably should ask him.
I understand. And, but Verizon was interested in doing that, right?
Sounds like it.
Okay. Ken, do you want to explain that?
Thank you. Generally speaking, AT&amp;T is not opposed to installing DAS or small-cell systems. It's just that most of the city, we believe, would be a poor fit for that kind of technology, given how it's meant to cover more high capacity, at least within AT&amp;T's network. I'll let Verizon speak for their own network, but there might be some places that are suitable for high-capacity traffic areas, maybe along Bothell Way, or perhaps the downtown as it develops, where small-cell could be added in addition to the macro sites that are there. But as a replacement of, or perhaps used in residential zones where there's a lot of clutter, whether that be very heavy vegetation or buildings or things like that, we don't think it's a good application of that technology, and it would likely leave quite a bit of gaps, so.
So, I'm a little confused. Let's say we got our eight-foot antenna pad, and a small-cell would be how big? That's not a small-cell, right?
I don't think small-cell is defined in the code at this time.
There is language that was provided to us.
Verizon has provided a language, which I understand is similar to what the FCC has in their order. It's the three cubic feet, as it is for antennas and 17 cubic feet for equipment. There is a volumetric kind of definition of what small-cell is at the FCC level, so...
So, these would be three cubic feet instead of eight?
Six.
Instead of six?
In the letter from Verizon, at least.
The last page of the Verizon letter talks about six cubic feet.
Okay. Six cubic feet is a small-cell.
Yep.
But you think that would create clutter, whereas eight feet wouldn't?
Well, it has to do with how the technology works. Most of small cells, again, talking about AT&amp;T's network, not necessarily talking about others, would transmit somewhere around 5 watts, which is significantly much, much, much lower power than what a typical macro site would do. And that's such low power that in, say, residential zones, as an example, we believe that we'd have trouble actually reaching into, you know, actually providing coverage inside of a building, because 5 watts really isn't that much more than what a Wi-Fi system would be that you guys might have in your own homes, so. But in a high-capacity area, in addition to a macro site, say, like that, where that capacity really makes a big difference, we think that there is a great opportunity for DAS and small-cell, and certainly are not opposed to any sort of encouragements to that type of technology. I think the overall concern that we had expressed was the requirement, or perhaps pushing us towards network designs that simply, you know, a lack of better words, we believe would lead to poor quality service, you know, in most parts of Kenmore, particularly residential areas, if there's a lot of clutter.
Okay. Thanks. Chuck, do you want to respond to why, or does your colleague want to respond to why you're more interested in DAS than AT&amp;T?
Peter Mauro, M A U R O, Verizon Wireless. So, actually, I'll agree with much of what Ken said. So, small cells are something that Verizon is targeting, but they are mainly for kind of high-capacity offload at the current time. The macro systems are still going to be in place. You know, the architecture is changing slightly. The macro sites will still be a long-term need for the wireless industry. So, yeah, so in the near term, small cells are certainly targeting kind of capacity offload areas, so high-traffic, dense areas. What we did with our, with our proposed amendment to expand kind of the non-CUP use into the residential zones is for potential future use. As I'm sure you're aware, the wireless industry changes rapidly. In two to three years, in five years, we may have the technology with a 5-watt or maybe a higher watt radio to potentially go into the residential zones and provide coverage there. But we don't want, you guys, you know, you guys don't want to go through this every two years? We don't necessarily want to go through this every two years, so we're trying to help kind of future-proof the code to some extent.
Have you, hasn't your industry experienced improved capacity for smaller cells over in recent years? I mean, is that the trend?
It's kind of, there's ways, there's things that the industry's doing, and I'll caveat the same as Ken, speaking for Verizon. There are things that are happening that do increase capacity on the existing networks, right? But we are also frequency challenged in some sense, right? We have limited bandwidth for the frequencies that we have. We have limited bandwidth for the frequencies that we have. So, you know, the small cell is not going to broadcast on all of our frequencies, more than likely. It's going to be targeted capacity offload, using certain frequencies to complement the existing kind of umbrella coverage that the macro is going to provide.
Okay. Any other, anybody else have questions on this? Thanks. It's Mark, right?
Peter.
Peter, sorry. All right. Hate to suck all the oxygen up, so again, open the floor, anybody else? Mark?
So I had a question for, I think, Mark at PSC. So I was reading your letter, I read it a number of times. I'm still trying to understand exactly what you're saying would be sufficient for PSC. So I see that, as we have it right now, I think we have a 20-foot additional height above the existing pole would allow one set of antennas, but not two sets of antennas, is that?
Yeah, that's correct.
Basically correct, okay.
The separation requirement is above the conductor, so you would need that initial seven feet to provide for the safety of the line crews, but beyond that, the separation between two antennas is set by the requirements of the equipment manufacturers and the carriers.
Okay. And then it's, okay, I'm reading from your letter here, you say, you recommend removing overall height maximums for wireless sites located on utility poles. So you're saying we should not have any maximum height? Or if we were to put a maximum height, from PSC's perspective, what would that height be?
Yeah, I mean, I couldn't, I couldn't put a number on it. I suppose the intent of that portion of the letter is just to recognize that pole heights are not consistent throughout Kenmore, even within the, even within a single distribution circuit, you've got poles of varying heights. And so to establish a code that only satisfies, you know, maybe the best-case scenario of a 35-foot pole in a, you know, 55-foot height zone, would certainly allow for colocation in some cases, but just depending on what the site is, you could unintentionally be disqualifying a very large portion of the poles, and that's going to force carriers to find another way, you know, to go through the citizen comment process, to try to find a way to build a new structure. I, you know, we just, we don't really have an opinion on this. I mean, the intention of the letter was to provide, you know, our basic safety standards, and to get them out in the open clearly, so that you guys can have that information when you make whatever decision it is that you'd like to make, or recommendation. Because, yeah, I mean, we don't want to keep coming back and doing it again and again. And then, I mean, beyond that, it's just, you know, that's pretty much it, just to, so you understand our standards.
Right, okay. So we have these numbers here, and I guess in PSC's view, you'd rather there not be any maximum height?
Yeah, I mean, we don't, as far as, for the, for the application in wireless colocation, you know, the pole head maximums for providing electric service are an entirely different topic, and not covered, you know, in this forum, but just, I think that, you know, the intention of that language is just to say, there's no reason to add 50 feet onto the top of a pole if you only need 20 feet, so we would never do that, it's just to allow the height of the pole to be determined by the requirements of the location. And it would be done, I mean, we don't want to purchase a pole that's larger or more expensive than, than we need to either, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to see 200-foot PSC poles on distribution circuits, just because there's no maximum, we wouldn't do that just for fun, you know, it's all just in the, yeah, in the service of, the system is not, I mean, the poles have been there for a long time, they get replaced, the heights are varying, so we just want to get that out there.
Okay, thank you.
That's not a question.
Thank you, thank you, Mark.
Anything else?
Well, so, I guess what I was kind of getting, I know we had a prior vote on whether, and I believe Dennis even made the motion to raise the heights on utility poles. Can you tell me, I know we've, I know we've done that, and it was a close vote, can you, because I'm honestly sort of rethinking this, can you go again and tell me why you thought we should raise it, I believe it was up to 60?
One, I had an arbitrary number of 65, was my initial commentary, simply to match the height that we were authorizing for the amateur radio. But it also was fitting in with the comments that we're receiving from the industry, in terms of the variation in the pole heights, and their desire to be able to have two antenna arrays on a given site. And my position still is that we ought to consider a way to accommodate that. I think we've got a very complex issue. And we've seen that by the type of testimony we've gotten, we've seen it by the result of all the little adjustments we're trying to do to accommodate it, and then something else pops out as an issue. We are proposing an ordinance that basically makes virtually all of the wireless antennas non-conforming, and that's a major impact. And it seems to me that we have a huge need in the area for wireless service. And I would hate to have us be bypassed by the industry, because it's too hard to do it. They may try it once, and then if it doesn't work out well, we may not see them again. They may not even try it, because they're going to, if they're growing in the fashion that they, the whole industry is, four to six times in the next five or more years, we are going to have a lot of shortcomings. And we will not stay with the curve as technology moves forward. So I'm just thinking, based upon what we know now, I would still urge us to consider a 65-foot limit, and that would include, you know, the design we saw for the, looks like 18, 24 feet with separation. I'm just trying to look at an easy way to go forward for most of this, and if it gets any higher, then I'm fine with the adjustment processes, except I think we're starting too low for them. I think that they could potentially be very difficult to maneuver through, we have no sense of the cost to the carriers. And I'm trying to be sensitive too, with the views of the people, but if we, this could go a lot of different ways. I mean, you could end up proliferating all these antennas, and it'll be even worse. So I'm looking at a way to try and streamline it, and I know we've put a lot of work in this, and a lot of thought, but I'm not sure where we should be without some more adjustments. That's my thinking.
Okay, thank you. Carol?
Although I wasn't here at our last meeting where we held the public, the public meeting for the public comments, the public hearing, I did go back and review it. And one of the things that I heard when I listened to it, having not been in the meeting, is that there definitely is a request on the industry, from the industry to our city, to have reasonable engineering limits, you know, and their appeal to us was, you know, we understand that as a community, part of your community is this lake access, lake view, you know, it's a, it's a part of who Kenmore is. And I think that we don't want to create ordinances that don't really match the engineering standards of what is the prevailing height limit. But on the other hand, we also want to create an opportunity for the people who live here in Kenmore, to have a process where they can, how do you do that? If a big company like AT&amp;T or Verizon comes in and they apply for a permit, but it exceeds our height limits, if we don't have any height limits, then we can't go back and ask them to take it down, you know? So that's really the tug-of-war that we're in. We have to come up with a height standard, stick with it, but we've also compromised and created some kind of a process for the industry to make an appeal to the city to have places where they can have bigger equipment, if you want to put it that way. And then there's a process that the public has to be able to have comment about that. And I don't, I don't personally think we need to have this huge height limit to accommodate the industry. I think the industry is going to want to serve this community, and as a city and a government, for the citizens that live here, it's okay to put a process in that's very clear and orderly for a company to dialogue with the city about what to do next. And I think there's very clear definitions about what those pieces are. So I guess, I think we just need to vote on what we've worked on, unless there's further discussion.
Thanks, Carol. Anybody else? Yeah, Mike?
First of all, apologize for missing so many meetings. I've tried to keep up, and this may be something that I've missed in a discussion earlier, but listening to the industry in our earlier discussions, it really seems to me that the height, the maximum height limit is the real issue when you're talking to citizens. And where we seem to be getting into trouble is particularly, I'm thinking particularly about the utility pole issue. Because we have varying heights of utility pole, we get into this, well, it's this number of feet, but you can have on and add on above that. And I think, listening to the industry folks, I think that's where they get into trouble. And I'm wondering if we might, at least for the utility pole, set an upper limit, and that's what they get to work with. So if you've got a 35-foot pole, we set a limit of 60 or 65, they've got that amount of space. If it's a 45-foot pole, they've got a different amount of space to work with, but we've got a standard height limit across the, across the city. Rather than try and get into this, well, if you pick a 35-foot pole, you get a little more space, if you pick a taller pole, but that pole happens to be where you need to put it, you're into a, you're into a problem, so. I think if we're trying to, if our value is on what the height of the pole is, then I think that's probably all we need to regulate, but...
I think we have both, correct?
Yes, we have both. I'm looking at our grid here, we still have, it looks like we have a number of places where we have a height limit, but then we have 25 feet above the pole.
Up to a maximum height of X, right?
Right.
Would it be simpler if we just set a maximum height, and then we encourage the industry to work with what's out there?
So eliminate the 20 feet, but no higher than X.
That's right, that's right. So above a certain height, then they need to go into some sort of administrative explanation why they need to have it.
The current code, just to remind everybody, the current code in residential zones is a 60-foot maximum height. And that includes utility poles and all other alternative transmission support structures. So that's just by way of reference, that since 2006, that code, that height limit has been in place.
And that's for all, all zones?
That's for the residential zones.
Residential, is there a commercial?
Commercial is 100 feet.
Well, I think Mike makes a good point, and I think maybe we got into the height above the existing pole, because that's what all the other jurisdictions do. And the irony is, we're actually giving more height above the existing pole than most jurisdictions, but we have a cap on the total height, which a lot of jurisdictions don't. But I tend to agree with Mike, I can't remember why we would have a height above the existing pole, and then a separate total height, and I think our primary concern is the obstruction in total height. Do we, did I, somebody may be able to refresh my memory? Or did we just do by virtue of inertia of what surrounding jurisdictions?
And I think it's because of our zoning too, that we had those discussions.
Right.
I think when we started, this applies not only to utility poles, but also to light poles that could be shorter. So when we started, it was so many feet above the facility, and then capped at a maximum height. So when, when the first recommendation came out, if you were thinking of a 30-foot light standard, then maybe you have more flexibility and more room to have a certain dimension above the pole, but then you didn't want to go above a maximum height. And we did use another jurisdiction's model for that. I think if the commission wants to just put a maximum height on it, that would serve equally well, without getting into how many feet above, above the pole. I would not recommend the opposite, which is to say, so many feet above the existing pole.
Which is what the industry was asking, actually.
And it's what the other jurisdictions typically did.
Right.
I think it's the distinction the industry's making.
Right.
I've got to leave in 15 minutes for my daughter's last piano recital, but I'm going to, then Mark would take over, I think this is going to go beyond that, and he's going to have my proxy, but I do want to raise a motion now, so you both have a sense of where I'm coming from, Mark has a sense of where I'm coming from, and I may be able to participate in the discussion. But I'm going to move that we, we have 55-foot maximum height limits in all these jurisdictions, and all these zones, except for the view zones, is that right, Laurie? Except for residential?
Right.
One through six. And we have 50 in the residential one through six. I'm inclined to have a 55-foot maximum height limit in all the zones, for one, simplicity's sake, and for two, and to get rid of the above-the-height-of-existing-pole restriction, so that we have a more simplified height limit, and it's consistent throughout the city, except for the view zones, which we've all defended. And one of the other reasons for that is, I think 55, it works with the eight-foot antenna, seven-foot separation, as 50 did, but it also gives some room for a second antenna. It wouldn't accommodate the eight feet plus one foot that AT&amp;T has saw for a second antenna pad, but if they got a five-foot minor adjustment, I think it would, it would get them up to 60, and that would accommodate all of that.
And they can have the six-foot instead of eight-foot antennas, a lot of the companies do that.
Yeah, true. So I think that would satisfy the vast majority of their concerns, make it simplified, this whole proposal, and still protect the obstruction concerns that we had. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
So effectively, we would have a width in minor adjustment of 60 foot?
Right.
Laurie, is that your interpretation of that, I just want to be clear on?
Right, so, except in the view zones, it would be 55 feet, and you have the opportunity to do a five-foot minor adjustment for height, so that would be a total of 60 feet, which is comparable to the current code standard.
Now, Doug, is your proposal just for everything but the view zone, correct?
Right, view zone has its own, don't obstruct the view is the overriding principle there.
Right, but they would still have the 15 feet above the existing pole?
For view?
Yeah.
Is that the standard?
The current standard is 15 feet up, and then it's the height of the underlying zoning district, up to the height of the underlying zoning district.
Right.
And it starts on this.
Mark, did you want to amend that part too? I think the view zone height limit is about 35, isn't that right?
35 or 40, depending.
Right. Okay. It's the last resort. I mean, we've made clear that you can't erect a wireless facility in a view zone unless you've exhausted every other option.
And we also made provision for them to make it hills.
Yep.
Right, certainly in the view zone, yeah.
In any zone, correct.
But I was thinking, do we give enough protection to the view zone after Mark raised that point? And I, my concern, I know they can go above that, but my concern is that they are sufficiently protected. And I do know that, I think we've already got that kind of obstruction level with the current zoning, because the distance between the waterfront, 522, is about 40 feet, so. And we've tried to protect that, and we do have, I think, a height limit of 45 feet in the, what was called SubArea 3, and that was the Kenmore Air compromise.
Forty feet.
Was it 40? Okay. So I think we're pretty close to that in the view zones. So we have a motion on the table, we have further discussion. I do want to say too, one reason I'm a little more willing to give this third or more compromise to the industry is that we do have a lot of stealth protection for these, and then the staff has also recommended some additional architectural protection to beautify those towers. So it gives me some comfort to think, okay, if they have to go that high, it'll look like a tree, or it'll look a little better than that thing that's sitting right out there that we kind of... that we kind of...
So a point of clarification, the only one that is changing per your proposal is residential.
Well, and the elimination across the board for the above the existing pole.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah, yeah. But I mean, the maximum height, the only one, yeah.
Everything's 55.
So could I ask a point of clarification before you vote?
Yeah.
Which is, in the view zones, did you also want to eliminate the 15 feet above the pole or just have the straight height limit of the underlying zoning district?
Well, that's what I was worried about. And that was my question, are we sufficiently protecting the view zone? But we, I don't think...
If, if you are up to the, only up to the height limit, you're as protected as anything else would be. The buildings can go that high.
That would be a reduction in the view zone of the height limit for the antenna, right? From 15 feet above existing zone height limit to the zone height limit?
It, it's 15 feet above the existing pole to the maximum height of the underlying zoning district is the way it's worded.
I'm okay with that.
So, so the question is, in the other zones, you would be taking out the additional above the pole phrase?
I see your point.
And did you want to do that also in the view zones, so that you just have a maximum height in all zones?
I agree with that. Take out the 15 feet above, and it's just a flat height limit. Simplifies things according to the Vanderline Principle.
Yeah, I'm, I think I'm good with that. That is inconsistent with all of our surrounding cities, so I'd be curious what staff thinks about that. Just asking for your read, since all the other cities have the above the pole height. I mean, they have the reverse, correct? They have the...
Flat. Above the pole standard without a height limit.
Right, right. And we're going the opposite direction.
I, again, have said, I think fairly consistently, that I would not recommend eliminating a maximum height because we don't have a maximum height for utility poles.
Right. But in other words, you read on eliminating the dual...
Above the pole standard.
I don't have an issue with it.
Okay.
It, the only time it would come into play would be, for example, if you had a decorative light standard, and you wanted to put something on top of a decorative light standard that, say, was at 25 feet, then you are allowing additional above that up to the maximum height. But if you settled on a maximum height, I'm not sure it makes any difference.
Mike?
I'd just speak in support of the motion. I think this is a good motion. I think it creates good balance. It, it does answer our concern of wanting to create incentive to look at the least intrusive type of approach. I think this does that. So I'm definitely in support of the motion.
Okay. Any other discussion? Take your time. Questions for the industry or for staff? Mark, you look really like...
Can I just ask a question? Is everybody, is everybody happy with the five foot for the minor adjustment? Five foot itself was a compromise in my, between what? Can somebody refresh my memory on how we arrived at five feet as the minor adjustment figure?
I, I think it was to allow enough to do a single antenna on a utility pole. I think that's why that number was chosen.
In residential, in particular.
So this would allow, with the five, with the change?
In commercial, actually.
It would allow two?
Two?
Yep.
And, you know, part of that, my, that's why I was asking about where, how's the industry responded to our series of compromises? And it sounds like they've been inconsistent. So one of my points of skepticism was, were they changing, moving the goalposts every time we made a compromise? It doesn't quite sound like that. So I'm, that's why I'm more willing to go up to 55 with the minor adjustment to 60 to accommodate the dual eight-foot antenna that they've apparently been requesting all along.
So then, just for clarification, if they wanted to go above that height limit, that would require that major adjustment process?
Well, if you were to settle on 55 feet, then with a minor adjustment, you could add an additional five feet and get to 60 feet. And above that, it would be a major adjustment. That's what, that's basically what I was asking.
That's a yes.
Do we have anyone from the industry that would like to comment on that and add to this discussion?
They want it. I don't, I mean, we've, we've heard them. I, do we need to do that? I mean, two of us have to leave shortly, so.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Well, you, just as we leave, doesn't mean you can't follow up on that. Mark, is it Mark?
I just have one, one quick comment, which is that...
There was Peter, there was Mark, right? There's Chuck.
You're doing great.
Let's keep us all straight.
Just trying, we know Ken.
So to enact, it was to your point, and I wish I would have clarified, that the reason that the language was suggested, that you eliminate the maximum height restriction and, and just stick with whatever the maximum addition would have been, is to address exactly this issue of not every pole is, is the same height. And so you're, you're playing games with, you know, one or two feet, and to require an entire adjustment process for that is, but, but that is not to say that we would suggest eliminating the maximum above the existing pole height. It was like, pick one or the other. But then, at 55 feet, and you should just know this, that you're essentially exempting all transmission facilities in the entire city. No transmission poles or distribution with trans, or transmission with distribution underbuild poles would meet the restrictions of 55 feet. Six, six sites in Kenmore, four on transmission right now, two on distribution. So it's just something worth keeping in mind, that at 55 feet, we wouldn't be able to do transmission poles, which is, you know, that's just, those are the facts.
Does that mean that they are non-conforming? Is that what you're saying?
So transmission poles are the great big poles. They're like 50 feet tall, and that is where a number of the existing facilities are located. So the question would be, would there be another transmit, transmission pole as opposed to a distribution pole, which are the ones we mostly see along the streets? If there would be a request to go on, another request to go on a transmission pole, it would require a major adjustment.
Which means there's an opportunity for public...
Right. We're getting pretty high. So that's when the public should step in, because we've seen this play out.
Right.
Deb has in particular.
Yeah.
So I think that's, we're okay with that. And there's very few transmission poles. It's almost all distribution poles, right?
We have three transmission lines that run through the city, so...
And how many distribution?
Oh, yeah.
Dozens?
Lots and lots.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember you came up last time. Feel free to render comment.
Good evening. Liz Carrascaro, representing T-Mobile. And thank you all very much for all the time and attention to this issue and hearing the comments. I really just want to second what the gentleman from PSC said. I live off 84th, and I have great wireless coverage, and, and I actually 10 years ago put one of the sites up there. But the coverage is great there because there's enough height to see over these awesome trees that we love in Kenmore. Now, when I take my walks out into the neighborhoods away from there, I get really spotty coverage. It's garbled calls. And what we like about the transmission poles is it does see over the hills, it does see over the trees. So in most jurisdictions, it's a great opportunity to sit in a residential area because you already have the tall utility line. So that's, I guess, my concern. And again, appreciating working on the compromise and finding reasonable heights. It's like we've sort of ignored what is often the best sighting solution in a residential area is the transmission poles. Granted, there's a, a process to apply, but in a lot of jurisdictions, it's just kind of the go-to solution for residential communities. So I guess that's the concern I see with this. So since PSC brought it up, I'll just second that. If there's maybe an opportunity, a carve-out, just to allow it, a reasonable way to do transmission pole sighting, because they are a great solution.
Thanks, Lisa. Anybody want to follow up on that?
We have a process.
Yeah. It's not a carve-out, but it's a process.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay, I'm down to like, I'm actually past my deadline here, so. If, I, I'm going to have to leave and delegate to Mark my position. Yeah, I'm happy to call for the vote. I just want to be sure there was no other discussion or questions pending. Before we do, okay, go ahead, Mark.
Well, I'm just, you know, the, the point about a transmission carve-out, does that not, so we're, we're comfortable going through the adjustment process?
I am, because the major adjustment process, because we're, we've already made three, maybe four compromises to get them up to accommodate what they say they need to do. Now we're getting to a height where I think people are going to object. And in fact, it's the height where they did object.
Well, it's the first we've heard that it's an issue right now. So, I mean, after six months of process.
Apart, yeah, I understand that. And I made that concern.
Yeah, right, yeah.
But I do, I think there was a pole, a monopole, was it on 73rd? The one that you were talking about that drew so much public criticism?
Well, I think it was a distribu, it was a distribution pole.
Regardless, it was, it was a really high, isolated pole.
It was 59, proposed to be 59.
What's that?
Proposed to be 59 feet, and it was a distribution pole.
Right.
It comes to a point where whether it's transmission or not, people are going to object. And it doesn't mean the city can't allow it. It just means it's time for the people to step in and say a few things, and the city to consider that before it approves. That's, that's why I'm okay with it. And I respect where you're coming from, Lisa, on that.
And if there is a significant gap in service, that's one of the criteria for...
They're going to get there. Am I wrong, but they're going to get their way at the end of the day?
If the service is spotty, you'd be that far ahead in arguing for whatever would be proposed.
I interrupted, and I apologize.
No, that's okay. I'm just saying, the significant gap in service you described can be addressed. That's where the adjustment process, that's one of the specific criteria that the adjustment process is designed to address, so.
Right. Lori, is, is my understanding that, that we have to, the city, accommodate coverage? Full coverage, reasonable coverage? I'm not certain what the standard is. And that what we're doing is simply saying, you have to go through this process to get there?
Right.
And that's why it's legal and satisfies the Ninth Circuit rulings and FCC regulations. So they're going to get there. Just question is, how much public input takes place before they do? And what the, we, what we require them to look at before they go to those most sensitive areas in the city? Okay. Anything else? All right. That being the case, Dennis? Sorry.
I am going to support the motion because I see it moving in the right direction. But I'm still looking, and my preference would be for a 65-foot limit. Just want to be clear on...
I fully respect that. Appreciate that. Did Michael Carroll want to say anything before we go to vote?
Mike?
No.
There's a delay.
Mike?
There's a delay.
I'm here. Oh, hi. Doug is asking if you have any comments you want to make before the vote.
If I could ask Dennis to just repeat his last comment again, please.
Basically, it was, I was going to support the motion because it was moving in the right direction, but I didn't think it was going far enough. My preference would be for a 65-foot limit.
Mike?
Thank you for repeating that, Dennis. I agree with you. It's going in the right direction. I'm not sure if going in the right direction at the edge of a vote is enough. This may be our one chance to have the right height set.
Anything else, Mike?
No, that's it, thanks.
Okay. Anybody else for comment? There being none? All in favor of the motion? In fact, do, do I need to repeat for anybody's clarification? We pretty much agreed and understand where the motion's going. 55-foot height limit across the city except for view zones, no height above the existing utility poles, and there was one more thing.
Removal.
Removal of the 15 feet above the existing utility pole, and only just a cap of the height of the existing view zone height limit.
Yeah.
That it? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed to the motion, please raise your hand and say nay. Are there any abstentions? There being none, the motion carries. I'm sorry?
I don't know what Mike...
Mike, did you vote on that?
I did not. I was trying to cheat and watch the video to see which way you were all voting, but it's running about five seconds delay.
Lori, do you want to fill Mike in on that?
Right. So the current, the vote was six in favor of the motion.
I'll vote in favor.
All right. Therefore, the motion carries. That settles that.
Yes.
I have to leave. Mike, please, or Mark, please take over his chair. Thank you, everybody, for your patience.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to accept the staff, the other...
Well, yeah, I think that was the next point of business I was going to get to. Are you, what are you...
As my proxy, I'm okay with it.
You're okay with it, okay.
Deborah?
Do you have a proxy?
Well, I just would move to accept the, I think there were three little changes that Lori mentioned at the beginning of the meeting.
Right. Would you mind going over those again, Lori? I know, I know you mentioned those at the beginning.
So the three changes that staff was recommending was to change the landscaping requirement in the zones other than residential to require a wider, instead of an eight-foot, a 10-foot landscaping screen, and to require a Type 1, which is a more intensive screen, in areas adjacent to residential development. That was one of the changes. The second change was, when we're discussing stealth installations, there are examples given, and an example would now include art in response to Mr. Howard's thought that lighted panels or almost like an art installation could be used to disguise a tower. And the third set of changes, I, were handed out to you, those were the changes to clarify the ECFM versus other modification rules. If something is eligible for an ECFM, it does not go through those other processes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on accepting the three staff recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mike, did you want to vote?
I vote aye.
Okay.
Okay, so we've covered, is there any other provisions any commissioner would like to bring up at this point for these recommendations?
Mike want to make a motion?
I'm concerned with what I would think is going to be, whether we pass this whole ordinance. And I am concerned that we are not understanding the complexity enough and the challenges that we're going to be giving to the industry. And I hate to even think about deferring this, because I think we're all sort of tired with it. But the other side of it is, I think we're going to either not get service because we've got too low of a height limit, based on, you know, some of the drawings we've gotten. And I, I just think that there is an important technological need. And so I appreciate the balance that we're looking at between the technological need and the view needs to protect them, the aesthetical needs. But I am concerned that if we have created too difficult of a process, and I tend to look at the citizen mitigation-type approaches that we've got here, could be too overwhelming. So the end result will be that the industry will go to the other places where they can quickly get things done, and they'll get to us when they got time, or if they've got money for it.
I think we've made a lot of concessions to the industry. They're going to compete for our business, just like they would anywhere else. They're competing against each other for that business. And we've basically allowed the two antennas, I mean, that's what we just went over. So, you know, in all zones except for view zones. So I, I think we're good. I've got a scoot, so I think you've got a quorum even without me.
Okay, do you want to have a proxy? Can we...
Is there a number?
Do we need to still vote on the whole package?
I think it wouldn't hurt just to forward the package to the city council. I think that would be a good thing. Okay. And I think, I think before we put that...
Can you give a proxy, though?
Yeah.
Just for, right?[1750.58] Right, is that how we can do it? Can she...
You need to alert the other commissioners that you're giving your proxy to someone.
It's just a formality.
Giving my proxy to you.
I have two proxies. Is that, can someone else please say her proxy?
Okay, okay. So I think what we're going to do at this point is, we're going to make them, give opportunity to make a motion to recommend these recommendations be brought forward to the city council. Before that motion comes to the table, though, we just want to make sure everybody in this room knows that we are not voting on these ordinances. All we are doing is voting on the recommendation to carry them forward to the city council. We're not elected officials. We are, we are appointed, and our elected officials will have a discussion, just like we did, probably not to the degree that we did, but there is opportunity for public comment at those council meetings. And as a member of this team, I think that we're, we produce something with the staff that the city council can work with, and that will serve the citizens of Kenmore.
Thanks. Yeah, I would just like to add that we, it's been said many times, you know, we're trying to balance wireless service and minimize impacts, and I think what we've come up with is fair and reasonable, especially with the adjustment process, which, as others have mentioned, is really the only opportunity for public comment on, on new wireless facilities. So I'm, I guess I would ask for a motion to approve the entire package of recommendations to forward to the city council. So, somebody wants to make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve moving this forward to the city council, including all the recommendations and motions that we passed tonight.
I second that.
Any discussion on the motion?
I repeat again my concern about it not being high enough, and because of that, I do plan to vote against it, although I have been really appreciative of all the work that staff has done, the work that the industry has done in giving us information, and the work that everyone in the comment has made that's on the commission. So I sort of hate to make my first vote here in that fashion, but it's not without a lot of respect for all that's gone on. Thank you.
Mike, do you have anything to add, or anything you'd like to say before we vote?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and seconded. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Mike, did you want to vote?
I will vote nay.
I would also note, I have Doug's proxy, and I'll vote Doug's proxy, aye.
And I have Deborah's proxy, and I will vote aye. So a motion passes 5-2.
Thank you. Is there any other business before the commission?
I...
Or anything staff would like to mention?
I just wanted to clarify on the motion about the three staff recommendations. You voted that six, but I wondered if you were also voting Doug's proxy. We'd record the motion seven, zero, if you were voting Doug's proxy on that.
Yes, I would vote Doug's proxy on that. He was fine with it.
Yeah, okay. That's it.
Okay. Any commissioners have anything to say before we adjourn the meeting? Okay, thank you. Anything from staff before we... How about our next, our next meeting? Can you update us again on, on when that is?
So, being as you've kind of made a recommendation to move forward, then this would, could move forward to the council on, on July 11th. So typically, how that works is that the staff would provide the background, and then the commission then kind of speak to the recommendation. And how that has happened in the past is that sometimes commissioners have either decided that one person will give the recommendation, or they've kind of divvied it up a little bit to talk about particular issues. So I don't know if you want to discuss that tonight.
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I'd like to make a recommendation, since we do have a regular session on July 5th, that's a Tuesday, right after the weekend, that we, we discuss that then, and take it, put that as a part of our agenda item for that evening. That seems reasonable to me, and then we'll probably have more attendees to decide who's going to say what.
That's fine. It will be the agenda item on, at that meeting. The housing strategy plan is coming back on July 19th, but that's fine.
Oh, well...
Oh, so that's the only...
Can we, can we make that decision, not in a meeting, but through an email?
I don't think so.
That would kind of be a serial meeting, which is problematic.
Not a good thing.
Okay. Do we want to...
Well, Mike and Dennis, do you have any thoughts on that?
I'm wondering, can we agree that we, one or more of us who are in the room today
will speak to the council on this issue, and would it be okay if, outside of the meeting, we agree that we confer with, for instance, Doug or someone else who isn't in the room today?
I, I think we need to probably, maybe it would be cleaner if we recommended that our chair present to the city council, unless he can't.
Well, there's a couple things here. First of all, Doug's not here to, I'm sure he's fine to do that. Second thing is, we did have, you know, two, two nay votes on the recommendation, so to the extent we are going to decide who's going to speak.
Okay.
I personally think we kind of need to discuss it and figure out who's, who's going to say what, and I know that's an extra meeting. Is there anything else we can do at that other meeting to...
It's not an extra meeting.